...co-chiefs in the state of Arizona to be held on Tuesday, April 2, 2019, at 7:00 PM in City Hall Building, 915 South Toverville Road, Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Coronado, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gabe Lindstrom is excused. Councilmember Joni Giacaminho?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Higgins?
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns?
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hansen?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Anna Klein?
Here.
City staff, Stephen Pockins, interim city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, George Castillo, fire chief, Britt Hanson, city attorney.
Thank you, ma'am. For the implication, I'd like to just take a moment to reflect on what an incredibly beautiful day and all the reasons we've lived in Bisbee, Arizona. Thank you. Would you please stand and...
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I don't know if the audience knows something we don't. That's why they're sitting so far away. Anybody pass the mints? Welcome, everybody, and welcome. We're live streaming on our Facebook page as well, thanking the state of Arizona. I really don't have any proclamations or real announcements today. I will be gone next meeting, and Mayor Pro Tem Klein will be in charge. And we're going to go right to call to the public, and Ms. Kayla Bailey?
Okay, sure. Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. It's interesting to be here in this new environment, my first time. I wanted to say thank you to the council and to all the people that helped make the return of the turkey vulture celebration such a success this year. We managed to raise $1,500 for the pool. That was wonderful, but it is only 10% of what our annual responsibility is for the pool, so we're looking forward to having more donations on that. And specifically, certainly, I want to thank the council for allowing the event to happen and the Bisbee Arts Commission for providing some funding so that we can make the events happen. That Carol Dodd and Josh White were fantastic with public works. They were right there, and they were just really responsible. We appreciate that. And Jason and Allison at the library were fantastic, too. So, thank you very much for the support on that, and I hope that we can do it again next year. I also wanted to just put in two cents about asking if we could be thinking about the parking situation with all the visitors we have into town. It's wonderful to see so many people coming to town, but there's some grumblings going on within the residents about being able to find parking. And I have talked to a couple merchants who said that they've lost business because people haven't been able to find places to park. I do understand that there is a parking study that was done when Robert Smith was city manager, and Mark Appel had some students from U of A do a study. And maybe if that could get dusted off, and there, Mark said that there are some more opportunities for parking spaces. So perhaps that's some place we could start in thinking about how we're going to do this, and maybe also having some residential spaces, too. So, anyway, thank you so much for letting me say my thoughts, and thank you so much for being here and representing us.
Thank you, ma'am. I will say that when the turkey vulture thing first came up, I was a little skeptical. But it's turned into a real fun project, and certainly benefits the city directly with the contributions to the pool, so thank you all for that. So moving on to accounts payable.
I move to pay accounts payable in the amount of $214,501.79.
I'll second. Questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Same question every time, and nothing seems to have done about Page 5, cemetery, $200 and $5 charged on cemetery plot, and it was 0310. Can we get it disconnected? Or that's not watering anything? It might be in the Serbian area, because they like to put Serbian people, or the church had put in a, I guess not the right term, years ago. And that might be it, might be leaking, but, or unless you know of somebody that's watering the cemetery, or what, there would be $200 to be used in the cemetery. We really need to disconnect it, because everyone gets like this.
Mr. Pockins, can we get the, look into that and get perhaps the cemetery committee involved in finding out what it is watering, if anything?
Okay. Yeah, well, I'll take a look at it.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? Ms. Klein?
On Page 2, for the Arizona Water, and it's for City Hall, but it's for 651.77. When do you have to...
The, I'm sorry. I know, but go right ahead, Mr. Pockins.
Apparently, we have a 4-inch meter serving this facility. The vast majority of the monthly expense of that 4-inch meter is something close to $600. We have been in contact with Arizona Water, and they're supposed to come out and see me about removing that meter and putting in a smaller meter, because the base price is based on the size of the meter. We clearly don't need a 4-inch meter here. You power a small factory with a 4-inch meter, but I'm going to try and get them to replace it with a meter as small as I can possibly put them to put on this facility. That will bring, I think a 2-inch meter is something like $200 a month. I mean, I think that's still too much, for four toilets and a couple of things. So we'll get the smallest meter.
Okay, thank you. And then, also on the same page, we have lodging and per diem for CL, and it says fire requirement for $34,464. What is that for?
I'm sorry, I don't have it. Lodging for whom?
It just says lodging for initials C.L.
It's the damage control.
Oh, is that wildfire?
Yeah, I can answer that. It's for, it's the last payment due to D.C. Restoration. When they came in to do the initial work on City Hall, they had estimated a per diem, and that finally got dissolved. So that's actually coming out of the...
That's per diem, yeah, that's how the insurance goes, so that's per diem for all the people they brought in to work.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, on Page 3, for the police department, the station has a $720.08 water bill, or APS bill, I'm sorry. Pretty high for the police department.
I'll have to take a look at that. I'll get back to you on that. I'll have to look at the actual bill.
And then, I also have the cemetery question. On Page 7, under the senior citizen section, I mean, it lists, you know, very nominal stuff, but then it has a total of $92,608.13. Is that a typo?
It's the total expenditures through the general fund.
For the entire general fund, not for, okay, just where it was listed, right, under the senior center?
Yeah. It totaled it out there.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
On Page 5, no, Page 6, sorry, it's grassy park, $190. Do we, do we really use $190 in grassy park now? Have we been watering? Is that high?
Yes, sir.
Again, that would partially be a function of the size of the meter. Let me check that, go on to what size meter is up there.
Anything else, Council? Here we go. Do we have a motion?
You already have a motion in a second.
I'm already that way. Although, you can spin a lot. All those in favor of paying accounts payable, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Carried unanimously. As a matter of fact, I believe I seconded that.
You did.
The consent agenda, item number 2, and we have items A through E. Approval, item A, approval of the minutes of the regular session of the mayor and council called on March 5, 2019, at 7:00 PM. B, approval of the resignation of Michael McHartman for the, for the planning and zoning commission. C, approval of the park facility wideaway use permit for the Bisbee Farmers Market for the use of lower vista, every Saturday from April 2019 to April 2020, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, per the included setup and breakdown. This includes setup and breakdown. D, approval of the park facility wideaway use permit for the use of city park bandstand for the Shakespeare in the Park to be held on Saturday, April 13, 2019, from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM. This includes setup and breakdown. E, approval of a liquor license application for Remote Tasting Room for Passion Cellars, LLC, located at 2 Main Street, Number 8, Bisbee, Arizona, Arlene Delmonico, applicants. Do we have any of these? The council was ruled for discussion. During that, I entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, item 8, please. One second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Coronado?
Councilmember Giacaminho?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. The motion passes unanimously. Moving on to new business, item number 3. Discussion of possible approval to dissolve the interim city manager ad hoc committee. Ms. Joy Giacaminho?
I just want to move to the standard of need at the moment. We have an interim city manager, and it needs to be dissolved, so we have no opportunities or missteps, and we will be advised.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor of dissolving the ad hoc, the interim city manager ad hoc committee, signify by a standing aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carried unanimously. Item number 4. Discussion of possible approval of an agreement that authorizes Mule Mountain Pest Control to provide pest management service to the City Hall Building, located at 915 South Toverville Road, Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Coronado?
City Council, according to is an annual contract with Mule Mountain Pest Control to provide pest control services for all the critters that accommodate buildings. This building, the, we've had lizard, we've had taurines, you name it, we've probably had it. But it will cover all three buildings, and the total cost for the year is $1,400.
Any questions?
They're just gearing towards insects, right? Not lizard?
Everything. We have a lot of gaps that they're going to take care of. They're concerned about rodent issues, because we're right against the mountain, so they're going to be taking care of all that.
Do we have a motion? I move to approve an agreement that authorizes Mule Mountain Pest Control to provide pest management service to the City Hall Building located at 915 South Toverville Road, Bisbee, Arizona.
I second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Coronado?
Councilmember Giacaminho?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 5. Discussion of possible approval of an emergency repair for the flink pump for Mule Gulch Lift Station, to include repair services, parts, and labor, totally $9,876.13 from Phoenix Pumps, Inc. Mr. Stephen Pockins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. This, item number 5, is as a companion item on the agenda, item number 6. And basically, the collection employees came to me with the need to repair one of the pumps at the Mule Gulch Lift Station. And the discussion that we had included talking about what we would do in the event that we had an outright failure of one of those pumps. There was a point in time, a good number of years ago, here where we actually had a spare pump for emergency purposes, so that in case we had a total failure, we could replace it quickly and then get the other one repaired. This is a little bit different than what we were doing years ago, but what we would like to do is get a new pump, replace this pump, and then have this pump repaired. This pump would come back, and it would remain in a lift station on standby in case we had a failure, so that we could quickly replace the pump in the future. So, it's a little bit pricey, but these are the most expensive pumps I've ever seen. And by rebuilding this pump, we're actually, we're going to spend about $4,000 less than if we had it by two days. So, staff recommends approval of item number 5.
Any questions, Council? Here we go. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve an emergency repair of a fluid pump to include repair services, parts, and labor totaling $9,876.13 from Phoenix Pumps, Inc. Second?
All those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 6. Discussion of possible approval of a Turkish pump from Phoenix Pumps, Inc., for the Mule Gulch Lift Station, at a total cost of $13,469.65, which is more dear than the last one.
Okay. As I mentioned in the last agenda item, this is a companion item. This pump will actually be put in place immediately upon, that's for arrival of the other, we're going to rebuild as a spare.
Questions, Council?
I just have one question. Is this a sole source? Or...
It's the brand of pump, that's the vendor, and the unit's body.
Okay.
No state contract.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of a company of Phoenix Pumps, Inc., for the Mule Gulch Lift Station, for a total cost of $13,469.65. Second?
Thank you. All those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carried unanimously. Item number 7. Discussion of possible approval of a repair pump at Phoenix Pumps, Inc., for the garage lift station, for a total cost of $3,024.13. Mr. Pockins?
You know, Mr. Mayor, I've been in and out of employment here over the last 13 years, and I can't believe I didn't know there was a lift station in the garage. But there is, and the pump finally needs to be repaired. So this one is a smaller pump, and it'll be a lot less expensive to rebuild, and it's not really an emergency, so.
I guess that tells us how long it's been there.
Yeah.
Working just fine. All right. Do we have any questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the repair, to repair pump at Phoenix Pumps, Inc., in corporate for the garage lift station for a total of $3,024.13. Second?
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carried unanimously. Item number 8. Discussion of possible approval of a fire detection services agreement. Chief Castillo and I are both going to discuss this. Chief, if you'd come up to, thank you. This is a project that the chief and I have been working on for some, probably close to six months now, I think. And what this is, the Banning Creek area, I believe it's typically called, is located on the other side of the puddle. And should there be a fire there, we would be responding, and we would then charge accordingly. And what the Banning Creek Firewise, which is a very active Firewise group, have requested is for us to set up a contract with them individually to provide fire protection services for them on a subscription basis. So what that means is if we, if, not forbid, a house catches on fire, and they're a subscriber, we will respond and put that fire out, basically for the money that they have paid us that, through that contract, rather than charging them personally for that. That money that we would be getting in ahead of time, I've asked that it be, of course, it goes to the general fund, but I asked that it be placed into a line item for the fire department specifically for wildland fire gear, so that they can keep current on the gear that's needed for our wildland fire hiking, and that this is a good way to, for us to actually pay for it without becoming part of the general fund. And so, we developed a contract. The contract, you'll note, is basically fairly simple. It's 10 cents a square foot under roof. And it's under roof because, not square foot, it's based on the house, but square foot, it's based on, under roof. And that's because an under roof fire is, whether it's inside of a house or outside, is the most dangerous for our firefighters to respond to, give a flashover, and a few other fire dynamic issues. And so, in round numbers, as an example, if somebody in the Banning Creek subscribed, and they had a 4,000 square foot under roof structure, they'd be paying us $400 a year. And we would be responding. We would respond anyway, I need to let you know that, but the average response cost is over $12,000. So they're getting a good deal, hopefully they never have to lose it, and we're, of course, getting a good deal, because it provides a cash flow to us for our firefighters' equipment. And the chief is here to answer specific questions about the firefighting, et cetera, and I can answer any questions about what we just talked about. So, Council? Ms. Klein?
Chief, have you made contact with the residents over there to get an idea of how many you may have that would sign up?
Yes, we've, I met with Haley Smith, March of 2018. We started talking, she started talking about her Firewise program over there, and I was pretty excited to listen to it, because I've always been concerned with that area because of the urban area face. The 28 years I've been here, we've had a few small fires in that area, but nothing dramatic. Every year, you know, with the weathers, we've been getting, we're getting more fuel sources out there, more trees guarded. It's always been a concern to me and everybody else, so with this fire subscription services now, it gives us a better chance to go over there and knock down a fire before it can get bigger and start going into the, entering the city of Bisbee.
Right. We've had several meetings with the Firewise group, and there are a number of them that are very interested in this project. I doubt that everybody in the Banning Creek area will subscribe, but there will be a decent number. We have several in the audience that came to, for this. The nice thing is that it's a very active Firewise group, and so they're very aware of cutback and fuel abatement and things like that, which help arm the safety of our guys when they respond.
And there's been several interested in the meetings. We have, we have two in the back over there. Once we find out how many of our visitors try to be wired, a mapping system out of which residents are paying, so when the call comes in, you know, once they're under the agreement, the terms are gone.
Okay. And then, one more question. When you're talking about under roofs, I'm assuming that that would also cover patios as well?
Yes. It does. Ramadas? Any other questions? Here we go. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the fire protection services agreement with the Banning Creek Firewise program. Second?
Thank you. We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Coronado?
Councilmember Giacaminho?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Chief, thanks so much. Thank you for your hard work.
Absolutely.
Item number 9. Discussion of possible approval to waive attorney-client privilege as to the February 14, 2019, email from the city attorney to the council regarding the resignation of Robert Smith and the February 22, 2019, email from Steve Coleman on the same subject. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's set forth in the council action form. This generated, the letter in question generated from the February 12 meeting, in which the council accepted Mr. Smith's offer of resignation in lieu of termination, but declined to accept his 14 conditions that were placed on that offer. Subsequently, I addressed the letter to the mayor. The council stating that, to put it in vernacular, it's certain contracts 101, if I'm negotiating with this Pockin to buy his house, and we agree on everything except for I am demanding that he throw in the washer, dryer, and the refrigerator, and he says no, but accepts my offer to buy, it's not a contract, it's not binding. Subsequent to that, an agenda item was placed before the council to either accept his resignation with all the conditions attached to it, number one, or number two, to go through the termination process provided in the city charter. And the council did approve that. Subsequently, someone sent a letter of complaint to the attorney general's office, saying that the city of this used funds by paying Mr. Smith for the two weeks after the February 12 meeting. And I think it would certainly help the attorney general understand why he was kept on the payroll for another two weeks by releasing that letter. And also, anecdotally, a lot of people in town are kind of wondering about it. I think Ms. Wong asked about it as well, and I think it'd just be helpful so people go to understand it, rather than keep it poked. Ordinarily, I'm very reluctant to advise a public body to, or any other client, to release something that is attorney-client privileged, but because the council went ahead and did determination at the subsequent meeting, I don't think that there's anything in the letter that would cause any additional liability to the city.
Thank you, sir. Before we go to questions, Ms. Poling is asked to speak on this. Ms. Poling?
I actually was the, one of the people that filed the complaint with the attorney general resulting from the March 5 meeting, but I did reference the February 12 meeting as well in that letter. And there was never, part of my complaint, in addition to the disbursement of public funds to pay Robert Smith, the... of public funds to pay Robert Smith, the issue of the resignation itself has never been addressed in rescinding the council's decision to accept his resignation. Therefore, according to the attorney general's findings, that has never been addressed. So, the disclosure of this email would be helpful in making the decision, the council's decision as to why they voted to accept his resignation, but it does not rectify the problem that the council's decision of February 12 has never been placed back on the agenda for reconsideration. And until that happens, no other action should be taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, counsel? Do we have a motion?
I vote to waive attorney-client privilege as to the February 14, 2019 email from the city attorney to the council regarding the resignation of Robert Smith and February 22, 2019 email from Steve Coleman on the same subject. Second?
Thank you, we have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Pulling?
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimous, sir. Item number 10. Ratification pursuant to ARS 38 dash 431 point oh five of actions taken on March 5, 2019. For the purpose of the item is to validate an earlier action by the mayor and council regarding the adoption of Resolution R 1905 stating the council's intent to terminate City Manager Robert Smith pursuant to Charter Section 3.09. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. The, sort of on the same subject of March 5 meeting, the wording of the agenda item was discussion of possible action regarding the employment status of Robert Smith. The reason it was worded that way rather than more specifically because two, excuse me, two options were laid out to the council at that meeting. It could be to accept his resignation on the terms that he supplied, or to go through the termination process according to the, as is laid out in the city charter, and the council chose to go through the termination process as laid out in the city charter. In any event, someone filed a open meeting law complaint with the attorney general's office on that. I don't think there's really anything to be concerned about. However, the legislature in its wisdom has set out a process to ratify agenda items to get rid of any open meeting law issues that might be out there. So whether or not the attorney general might be concerned about some open meeting law issue by ratifying today, we can get rid of that open meeting law issue. And therefore, we encourage council to ratify the decision. The wording of the motion would be pursuant to ARS 38-431.05, and that's where the ratification process is laid out. I move to ratify the adoption of Resolution 19-05 stating the council's intent to terminate City Manager Robert Smith pursuant to Charter Section 3.09. I probably need to say that this doesn't move, make the decision a month later or several weeks later, it's just ratify the decision that was made on March 5, so that decision would, would then stand from that day.
Thank you. Ms. Pulling, you're signed up. Did you wish to say something further?
Yes.
Again, the attorney general letter of March 13, addressing the complaint that myself and other person has filed in regards to the termination. The attorney general is asking for the minutes of the executive sessions of March, of February 5th, February 12th, and March 5th, and the minutes of those meetings. Until the attorney general receives these minutes and makes its findings, it is premature to ratify any legal action taken by council regarding the termination.
I'd like to address that point, it's not premature, the statutory process gives 30 days to ratify, but that type is about to expire.
In, in that regard, sir, Arizona revised statute 38 dash 43, 431 point oh five says that the council does have 30 days after discovery of the violation, or after such discovery should have been made by exercising reasonable diligence. And it's through our city attorney's own admission that he knew of the problem as early as February 15 by email to the council, and again, on February 22 by email from Mr. Stowe regarding the February 12 decision. Therefore, it's been 45 days since the council knew about this.
Ms. Pulling's confused, it's not the February 12 meeting that this issue, it's the March 5 meeting that it's issue.
According to the attorney general's letter...
Wherever, state, state.
I am, I am making my statement.
Please.
Thank you. According to the attorney general's letter, there is a possibility, a possible open meeting violation. The agenda failed to properly notice the public of the intention to terminate the employment of City Manager Smith. The possible open meeting violation and likely a close call because discussion of employment status could have also included the reconsideration of the resignation that happened on February 12. So, according to the attorney general's findings, they are looking at the February I am suggesting, I'm not finished yet.
Come on, okay. Your, your time is, is basically, I'm sorry.
It was five seconds.
I'm asking that this item be tabled until the investigation of the attorney general is complete. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add, I guess you have a couple of comments. The, first of all, it's, it's the wording of the March 5 agenda item that, that we're looking to cure here tonight. And I should point out that some of the people that really wish Mr. Smith had, had not gotten paid for the initial two weeks after the February 12 meeting, that if, in the off-chance that the attorney general found an open meeting law violation on March 5, that would mean that decision to the council would then, could then be voided, and Mr. Smith would then be paid for the time since the termination on February 26 through whatever date we get this all figured out. So it's, it's kind of counterproductive for those who think that somehow they're doing some harm to Mr. Smith by, by tabling this or not taking any action on it or something like that. Just thought I'd mention that.
Thanks, sir. Questions, counsel?
Pursuant to ARS 38 dash 4 through 31 point oh five, I move to ratify the adoption of Resolution 19-05 stating the council's, council's intent to terminate City Manager Robert Smith pursuant to Charter Section 3.0.
Do we have a second? I'll second it, now we can have discussion. Ms. Giacamino?
So I have a few questions. Again, can you say exactly why we're doing this specifically?
Yes, because it's been a complaint made to the attorney general, and to, if, in the case the attorney general would find a violation, this cures that violation. It cures the violation because the statute requires everything be done, the, the cure statute, the ratification statute requires everything done, the wording be placed on, on, on the agenda or on, on the notice, so that if the public had any question about what action was going to be taken at the March 5 meeting, which they would have if they had read the council action form because it laid out the two possibilities there, but in case there, there was an issue, this takes those issues off the table, those open meeting laws off the table.
So what happens if we don't?
If, if, if you don't ratify it, nothing. It's just that the open meeting law issue keeps going forward before the attorney general, and you see what happens.
So what happens if the attorney general comes back and finds that we are in a violation of open meeting law based on the prior date?
Well, there's, there's a number of options. The attorney general sometimes takes no action whatsoever, just points out that there's open meeting law violation. In other instances, they've required open meeting law training, and the, the worst result of poss, of all that is possible, and I've never seen this happen, at least not in any of the public bodies I've represented, is they void the action taken at that meeting. In this case, the termination of Mr. Smith would then be voided, and he would not be terminated.
Now, could he resign? I have a question for Mr. Hanson.
Sure, ma'am.
So if that were the case, then wouldn't we owe back pay?
It would be a really murky legal situation because he, he would have gotten pay without, he would have gotten paid for that time period, that's correct, and he would be back on the payroll. If, if he's, if he's not terminated and his resignation is not accepted with the conditions that he placed on it, and there's no action of the council either terminating him or accepting with those conditions, he's back on the payroll.
And then we have to start the process all over again?
Have to start the process all over again.
May I, one second. As I understand, what, what this action is, is not revisiting whether he's terminated or not terminated or whether, this is simply in the event that the attorney general could decide that there was an open meeting law violation, by us ratifying that decision, it takes that away.
It takes that off the table, that's correct.
All right.
Okay, but to ratify this decision, do we need to go back and rescind the decision that we made to accept the resignation?
No, and now that you've voted to, to make my letter to the council on that subject, or waive attorney-client privilege on it, I'm more free to speak about it, but the action that was taken at the February 12 meeting, accepting his resignation, but not any of his conditions of his offer of resignation was, was just void. You don't have to rescind something that was never solid in the first place. So there's, today's agenda item has nothing to do with rescinding that, it doesn't have anything to do with, as, as the mayor pointed out a minute ago, of reconsidering whether to terminate him or anything like that, it's just ratifying a decision the council already made. And in response to Ms. Giacamino's question, she, she asked, if you don't ratify the open meeting law violation, what will happen? Well, it doesn't change the decision that was made on March 5, so that decision still remains in place, it's just that there is the possibility of the city getting, being needlessly with an open meeting law violation with the possibility, because it's in the statute, that, that March 5 decision could be void, and then we're all back to where we started from again.
Okay, and then one other thing, I've got the AG letter in front of me, and they are asking for the February 12 agenda items.
Oh, yeah, I mean, there's, there's multiple issues here, I'm not saying there's that, they aren't asking questions about the February 12 meeting, but what I'm trying to do here tonight, by rescinding this ratification agenda item, the council has ratified the decision made on March 5.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Corrada?
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Nay.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes by the way. Item 11. Discussion of possible action regarding the further recommendations on the Constantino wire along the US Mexican border. This is an item that was brought forward, we've heard Ms. Neil Covington-McBride speak, and she has asked me to place this on, sort of surprised she's not here, but in any event, she's asking us to do something further rather than just the resolution that we put forward. And I, I don't know what that further is, but I did put it on the agenda at her request. Perhaps someone else has an idea about what that further might be.
Could we table it until she's at the meeting to offer?
We, we, you have that, you have that right.
Mr. Mayor, just for your information, she probably won't be available for a council meeting until next month.
Thank you, sir.
What's the date of the first meeting for May 17?
7th, I think.
7th, okay. I mean that we table this item until May 7.
7.
Please go.
Those in favor of tabling to May 7, signified by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, unanimous, sir. City managers report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a few updates tonight. Thought I'd just let you know that about one year ago, I buttoned up what I thought would be my last city budget tomorrow. We will begin in earnest to start picking through the department budgets for the fiscal year 20 budget process. I believe that the 20th director has provided you a budget calendar, so that you can anticipate work sessions when they come, and of course, those will be a little bit later on, but we will begin the meeting with the department heads, who have already submitted their individual department budgets, and then we'll be going through those one by one, starting tomorrow. So, the, the process of getting down to the nitty-gritty will be done very shortly. Second item, city manager search update. We actually hit the street today with ads in the ICMA bulletin and the LEAK bulletin, so you can expect to see that information coming out. There will be other publications, as we discussed, where we will be advertising, but if you recall, the Target thing that we had given you to hit the street was, was the 8th of April, so we're actually on the street a few days earlier. So, the, the staff and I are hard at work to get the rest of the process scheduled and executed, and we give you updates along the way, of course, it's, it's certain ones, you know, we get updates that should be given, an opportunity to participate. So, I'm just happy to report that I've already started replacing myself. The Public Works Director's search update, after consultation with legal counsel, there were several people who had been interviewed for the position just a short while back who had not been identified previously, and so we went through and decided that there was one resume that merited an, an additional interview over and above what had been done before. I consulted with two out of three of that prior interview committee, who had given this individual some fairly high marks for his qualifications and experience. So on Thursday, we're going to interview him again with a different interview group, but with the input that we've received from the prior, prior interview group, with the possibility that this person may be a good fit for the city. We will keep you updated on that, hopefully, maybe you have something to tell me on Friday. And then, the Tim Town paving project, that's a CDBG project that I know you're all familiar with. The contract was finally signed late last week by the contractor, it came back to the city, we have issued a notice to proceed, and the mobilization date for that project is April 22. So you can expect to see more activity... So you can expect to see more activity in Tin Town again fairly soon. And I, I gotta say, it is a point of personal privilege, I've been around to watch an awful, pretty darn good transformation in that particular part of the city, and this is just one more step in the process of, of, of doing what probably all of us should have been doing 23 years ago. So it's pretty good to get that started. And then just one other item, we had talked during our work session last week about this city manager search update, about looking at possibly using U of A, ASU through their respective colleges at recruiting candidates for city manager. And I talked with a fellow that I know at ASU that runs the program up there, and Joelle had talked to someone at the elder school at U of A, they simply refer their candidates to the same sources where we're doing our advertising. So I at least answered that question, but it was a good question to answer, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. I move to adjourn. All those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Please take it.